Good morning, everyone. Welcome. This regular May 17 meeting of the Grant County Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. Please join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. This is the official proclamation on my behalf.
Consideration of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Due to the length of time between reports and the executive session, and the executive session is to meet with a specific individual, I would like to move item 15. Item 15 to immediately after public input if the commission thinks that's okay.
You want a second?
How long do we anticipate that executive session take? We don't know.
It probably depends more on our questions. Mr. Spels, how long will your part of presentation to a same executive session take?
I think that, uh, what we're going to discuss in the regular session should last about 10 to 15 minutes of just our discussion and then whatever questions the people have.
I think we could wrap it up in less than 30 minutes unless we have a lot of questions.
Well, I feel it's something of a discourtesy to folks who are then going to have to wait. That's true, but we're also, that man's getting paid a lot of money and sitting here isn't very good for it.
I'm somewhat indifferent, but, uh...
Well, so...
Say, we've got a motion and a second.
We're discussing the motion. I don't know what the point of order is exactly.
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I'm curious if an alternative would be to reschedule it for a time convenient to Mr. Stokes so he could leave and not have to wait during the entire meeting, but so that everybody else wouldn't have to wait. Yeah, I'm going to leave immediately after this meeting to Phoenix, so...
Okay, uh, poll and favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Aye.
Uh, motion period.
Do you have a say?
So at this time, uh, we'll, uh...
Just one change to the agenda. We're there. I had done another...
Right, so is the, uh, so the agenda's approved then with that change. Uh, Mr. Spels, report from Heela Regional Medical Center.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be here today. How about now? Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is the report for the month of March 2018, but before I get into that, I'd like to, uh, have, you know, make a couple of comments about the State of the Hospital address we made to the public. We had approximately 80 to 100 members of the community come to our meeting, and we listened to what they had to say. We're, uh, one in particular, one comment that was requested of us, we're acting on now, so, you know, we just took, took one action item out of it, which there were multiple, but for one, we're definitely moving forward. And we've actually asked this particular member of the public to be our public, uh, input for the, our new patient statement redesign, so I really appreciate that lady coming in and meeting with me Monday, so we're moving forward with that. And I'd like to thank the commissioners, those that attended. Uh, again, it is a, uh, it was an opportunity to, to participate in a hospital event, and anytime we can get together with a common cause, it's good for us and the community. So thank you so much for that. So the month of March, uh, which is our ninth month of our fiscal year, uh, the hospital had, and I'm going to hit, just hit the highlights and, and I'll answer any questions you may have. Month to date, we, uh, we realized a profit of $818,908, uh, which brought our year-to-date loss for 18 to $339,674 compared to this time last year, a $6.6 million, 295,640 loss. So we made quite a, quite a change in this fiscal year. As it relates to the profit, though, uh, one, uh, last month, we talked about uncompensated care reimbursement from the state. So we did receive $6.2 million on April the 17th, uh, related to the 1115 waiver program. Uh, so we went ahead and since we received the funds, we trued up our, uh, our accruals on the financial statements to reflect the actual cash received by the organization. And I detailed on my handout to you the components of that cash, which we discussed last month as well. I do want to give you an update. Naiven Haffey, our Meditech vendor for our optimization process, it has been on site now almost a month, uh, and making significant progress in, one, determining the scope of the issues that need to be addressed, and we're starting to make some corrections to the Meditech system. We've also started the planning phase for our upgrade to Meditech 615, and that is , uh, be moving along fast schedules. Uh, which, uh, right now, the tentative effective date of the go-live date is August 22nd. Uh, moving to page two of my report, volumes, charges, and KPIs. Uh, last month, we had, or for the month of March, we had 195 admissions versus 183 last year, patient days. We had 573 versus 616 last year. Uh, average daily census was 20.5 versus 22 last year. And here's the key to the whole, why these numbers are, are lower than last year is our average late to stay with 2.9 days versus 3.4 days. So we're managing our, our patients in the hospital much better, and I, and I think I reported on this last month. That's, uh, that's a continuing, uh, benefit of our, how we manage patients internally. Emergency room visits, we had 1,330 versus 1,575 last year, so we've seen a little decrease there. Outpatient, uh, visits, we had 3,677 versus 4,300 last year. Uh, clinic visits, uh, we had 1,623 versus 1,800 last year. Uh, surgery was at 350 versus 405 last year. Oncology visits, uh, as we anticipated, are much lower than last year. We had 252 versus 739. Uh, we, we expect that number to start moving up as we've begun radiation treatment as well. Uh, births, we had 18 for the month versus 26, so, uh, for, in, on all the outpatient, the majority of outpatient visits, you know, we, we seem to be a little bit down from last year. Uh, outpatient, though, is, you know, holding pretty steady. Cash collections for the month of March was $4,696,169. That was up, uh, right at $16,000, a little bit higher than last year. Uh, days cash on hand at, at the end of April was, uh, 39, which that number will go up with the receipt of that, that cash that I just previously discussed, because we, we were notified that we would get this money. We trued up our books, the cash actually came in subsequent to the month, so the days cash on hand, uh, number will move from next, next month. Uh, days in, in AR is 64 versus 46 last year. Days in accounts payable, uh, 53 versus 42. And I do want to make one comment, that we had, our days in cash last month was 43, and we moved down to 39. Well, I did that by design because I'd already been notified the cash was coming, it just hadn't gotten here yet, so I, I paid off, I paid some more payables than I normally would have based on the, uh, the incoming cash. So I, again, our year-to-date profit or loss in this case is $339,669 versus a $6.3 million loss last year. Now, just to kind of give you a, a unofficial rough look at net, at, at this past month that just ended, which was April, it appears the health system is, has broken even with a slight profit. Uh, we did not have any of these, uh, any state funding rolling through the financial statements for this month, uh, although I have identified some additional opportunities for reimbursement from Medicare, uh, but I don't have enough solid information related to that to book any type of revenue. Uh, so I will wait till we get, um, we get some definitive numbers on that. Any questions I could answer?
Questions for Mr. Spels? Yes, ma'am. Uh, first, thanks again for, uh, remarkably detailed presentation. It's quite a contrast to what we used to receive, so appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate having it earlier. Uh, one question, we, we understand the oncology decline, uh, I don't particularly understand the outpatient decline. Uh, do, do you have an understanding of, of where that comes from?
You know, outpatient, of course, it goes across multiple different service lines, so I, I know, uh, radiology was down a little bit this past month, uh, you know, lab, lab was down a little bit last month, uh, so it, you know, we expect during certain times of the year for volumes to, uh, to fluctuate, and especially in the springtime when people start moving around more, they tend to be a little bit less opt to go to the hospital for...
We are comparing March to March, so presumably the seasonality is somewhat balanced, and it's about a 15% decline, significant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not a particular service line that had a big problem.
No, sir. Yes, sir. They're across all, multiple service lines.
Uh, another question I had, the, uh, daily expense of daily revenue on page two of your key performance indicators.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I wouldn't, it doesn't feel like we're comparing apples to oranges, uh, maybe this is some kind of industry standard, but it's odd to me, the daily expense is based on the net patient revenue. It appears to me, when I do the math...
Net, net, uh, the daily expense is really just taking the, the expense side of the income statement divided by the number of days...
By 31.
Yes.
Yeah, that came out pretty close to your number, so I figured that's what it was.
Yes, sir.
The daily revenue, however, has nothing to do with net, right? That's the gross.
The gross, yes, sir.
And, and in fact, the difference is enormous, right? When I took the net, it's at 221,000 or so instead of 533,000 or so.
Mm-hmm.
Big difference. Why don't we base that on, on the net after, you know, taking out, uh, the large volume of adjustments that have to be made because of Medicare contracts and Medicaid contracts and write-offs?
I can do that. I can adjust the report for that.
If there's a rationale for not doing it, I would, I'd love to hear it.
Because I manage, from a CFO perspective, I'm, 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 my job is to manage net revenue, and there's a lot that goes into that.
Exactly.
But that's the number that we're going to be tracking as we, as we start making improvements in the revenue cycle.
The net.
Not gross, but net.
Yeah, so, so let's put that in there.
Yes, sir. No problems.
Sounds great. And my last question is, you've worked in a number of places, uh, is it typical to see the self-pay accounts receivable just really stand out as the service of the AR?
Yes, sir. It, it is, and primarily that's driven by the number of days Medicare says we have to, uh, continue to bill an account before we turn it over to bad debt, so which is 120 days. And that if we're going to claim Medicare bad debt, we have to hold the accounts for 120 days, and then we have to send them to a collection company.
Okay. All right. Well, I really appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Other questions?
I'm not sure how to articulate it. When I think of how I want to articulate it, I'll ask it.
I, I just want to, second, what Mr. Brown said, thank you for this detailed report. It's, uh, nice to have it in writing where we can process it and, and respond to it. Thank you.
I, I, third, Pat Aspel.
Yeah, also want to say thank you, if you'd please, uh, Ms. White, know that we appreciate the tour yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was a good tour. Uh, it was good to see the, you know, the, the positive and, and speak to a lot of the, the actual patients that were there.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they just kind of put, uh, put the nail in the head when, when they state that there's not a problem with service, service has always been great. And, uh, and I think we as commissioners appreciate that.
Well, well, thank you. And along those lines, I meant to, uh, point out again that we moved to single occupancy patient rooms on, uh, April the 30th, and I have been, I've spoken to, with a couple of families, uh, kind of, you know, subsequent to that move, and, uh, it seems to be a, um, well-received by, by our patients and, and especially their family, because it does allow a certain amount of privacy for them and their loved one in the hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since I had more time to review the agenda, I do think that maybe we ought to look at it one more time and move Matt and John up in front of going to executive session. Okay, that, that, I'm good with that. I just didn't want to do all the mundane stuff.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to move, uh, the New First New Mexico Wild Bank Rodeo Week and the update on force service to immediately after public input.
Okay, is everybody straight on that? Uh, second?
Second.
Poll and favor.
Aye.
Motion, okay. At this time, we'll hear, uh, public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. Uh, this is not a question-and-answer period, and speakers are, uh, limited to five minutes. And please, when you get up, make sure the white button is, is, got a little red light and it's turned on, and please state your name for the record. Any public comment? Yes.
Uh, let's see. I don't see any red light yet.
There you go.
Does that work?
Yep.
Good deal. Uh, for the record, my name is Ed Wilmot. I believe I know most of you at the, at the front desk. Uh, I had basically two comments to provide today, uh, but they both relate to the, the Heela Regional Medical Center, uh, which is an issue I've been following ever since I've actually moved down to this area. I attended your public meeting at the end of April, and unfortunately, a family emergency got me to the Heela Regional Medical Center that night, and so I wasn't able to, uh, hear all of the comments and also participate by providing my own comments. But since then, uh, I've, I, the, the voice of the community that I'm hearing, and maybe the preponderance of comments I suspect you're hearing, is, is a concern from the community to say, hey, uh, the private ownership of this hospital isn't what we want. Uh, and I don't know what you've been hearing, but I wanted to make sure. I felt it's incumbent upon me to convey to you the personal experience I've had regarding private ownership and working with a, a hospital that had been run by a private organization. And oh, by the way, that private organization just happened to be LifePoint. Uh, I was the co-chair of the Los Alamos Medical Center, uh, Board of Trustees, and for a period of about three years, we worked through crisis after crisis with LifePoint. I can't say I'm an advocate for, for LifePoint, not because the experience wasn't excellent, but it's now dated. It's 10 years ago. But I, I think the general conclusion that I came to, that working with a private organization in the community hospital was a good experience, and that as chair of the, as co-chair of the board, we actively solicited during that time period comments from the community on a regular basis about the care of service. And there was no, we received actually no comments regarding degradation of care or of any incidents where there might have been an issue where efficiency was, was considered in lieu of safety. So I have a very positive experience in my, in my lifetime, and I, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the board heard that voice, because I think, I do believe there's a preponderance of people that feel very comfortable with having the county run the hospital, but I'm saying that if you get a good proposal from a private corporation, please keep your minds open about that and, and evaluate it in a manner that allows you to make a good judgment about the benefits for the community. So that's the first comment. My second comment is regarding, uh, I don't know if Benjamin Fisher's here today, but I want to, I just want to publicly thank him from the Daily Press for the dogged reporting that he's done in following the hospital issues, because he allowed me to realize that on your working session on Tuesday, you talked about an issue that's very dear to me, uh, and that was the, the issue of the process for selecting members of the Board of Trustees. I, I compliment you on your willingness to consider, uh, improving your process. Uh, I had the pleasure of, of leaving my comments from the last process with Charlene Webb in writing, and also she was gracious enough to allow me the, the opportunity to debrief her on each comment that I had. So hopefully, that might even be circulating right now as you're thinking about changing process. But I cha, I, I challenge you as a board to think of, of the structure of the Board of Trustees at the same time you're considering the, the management of the hospital. They go hand in hand. Quite frankly, I, my personal experience as well as the opinion of public administrators is you don't have a good hospital without a good board. You don't have a great hospital without a great board. So I would encourage you in parallel to look at such things as maybe restructuring the board, and I know you're constrained by New Mexico law, if you to maintain ownership as the county yourself, but consider restructuring the board to make sure that you have the skillsets necessary and the vision and strategic wisdom necessary to assist the CEO. Yes, I'm, I'm just about done. Thank you for the reminder. I promise to keep it short. Er... But, uh, and then also to possibly repopulate the board. I took considerable amount of time and personal expense to, to, to realize that there is an option for the board in my, from the professional judgment of my counsel, that you can replace board members. I believe that the board is responsible as well for the crisis that we're, that we're looking at, so that's why this is even more important, I believe. So please consider the parallel changes that might be possible during this time period. And it may be moot depending upon the selections you make, but I think this is a good opportunity to look at the whole thing as a system. So thank you for the, for the opportunity to provide these comments.
Thank you. Other public comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Victor Juarez. I'm a citizen of Grant County. Friday night, my wife and I experienced an event that occurred in this county that endangered my life and endangered my wife's life and endangered the lives of other members, citizens of this community. And we, my wife and I thought we need to address this issue. We found ourselves behind a county, Grant County Sheriff's car. And I'm saying just a a car, because there could have been other officers involved, okay? We don't know if DPS officers were involved, and we know Silver City officers were involved. But my story begins in Baird, when we were exiting Baird, okay? And the story actually begins at the county line, I believe, between Luna and Grant. But we were following a DPS officer, I don't know, a Grant County officer with his lights on, emergency lights on, in the left lane. In the right lane was another vehicle with his lights on, not emergency lights, his, his flashing lights, uh, not police officer lights, emergency lights, blocking traffic, okay? I don't know if that was a sheriff officer or if that was a private citizen. In front of those two vehicles as we exited were about 30, 40 other vehicles. All of them had their flashers on. My wife and I didn't know what was going on, and I'm sure there were others that didn't know what was going on. But we saw what appeared to be lights weaving between lanes like a wave. As we got to the top of the hill adjacent to that Family Dollar store in the armory, as we were at the top of that hill, it became apparent to us that you had at least a minimum of 30 cars, okay, doing a wave between lanes. And as far as I'm concerned, that created a dangerous environment to all the participants that were involved. And I later learned that what was going on, and there was a school bus involved, with students involved, and that that stu, school bus had his lights going on. We endangered, our officers endangered the lives of those students too. And because of that, my wife almost had an accident. She almost created an accident, and I was almost involved in an accident myself. And I found that to be unnecessary, and, uh, I was quite frightened of what was going on, on the road. And the way I feel is that somebody orchestrated this thing. And officers who are out there to serve the community, to enforce the law, the street laws, the highway laws, permitted people to drive recklessly on those roads by doing this so-called wave. And I also believe that somebody...
Give about one minute, ma'am.
Needs to be held accountable, and that perhaps it would be to who all of you to get a DPS officer or that department to investigate the events that occurred. Had I been in an accident, or my wife had been in an accident, I would have sued every one of you. I would have sued every Grant County officer. I would have sued the sheriff. I would have done the same thing for the town of Silver City, and I would even sue the school district, because people's lives were put on the line. We have no way of knowing who orchestrated this. Somebody orchestrated that, and somebody should be held accountable for it. And I'm grateful that the citizens that we didn't face a potential hazard of having multiple cars, multiple victims, and perhaps a casual, some fatal casualty, because I was following that sheriff's office, that, that vehicle going 50 miles an hour and trying to witness this event that was occurring.
Thank you.
And I hope, so I hope somebody looks into this matter. I really do, and I hope somebody has the courage to address it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Uh, seeing none, we'll proceed with agenda item G, right? Approve or disapprove proclamation declaring the week of June 13th through June 16th, 2018 as first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week. I think we have, uh, Brendan, if you could read that proclamation, and then Mr. Myers, uh, if he's here, could speak to that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of the Board. Whereas the Southwest Postman Association and High Low Pro Rodeo will be presenting the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo in Grant County, New Mexico, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 20th year in Grant County in 2018, and whereas cattle ranching was created by the earliest settlers of the North American continent, and whereas ranching has been a major contributor to the history, customs, culture, and romance of Grant County, and whereas the Sparta rodeo perpetuates and keeps these qualities alive, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is one of Grant County's major tourist attractions and spectators, and rodeo cowboys and cowgirls from throughout the west will converge in Grant County for this annual event. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of Grant County does hereby proclaim the week of June 13th through June 16th, 2018 as first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week.
Thank you. Mr. Myers? Oh, yeah, come on, have a... Thank you, Mr. Orland's here also.
No, I'm just sneaking up by John. He knows all the talkings.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you for allowing us to come in. I, uh, I really don't know where to begin, because, uh, we, the committee has worked very hard this year to produce a first quality, family-oriented, exciting... year to produce a first quality, family-oriented, exciting, and interesting rodeo. And I think we have done it. We have, we have a brand new contractor this year, which you heard the name of, High Low Rodeo Company out of Eastern Oklahoma. They are very excited about coming to the rodeo. They have good quality, national finals bucking stock. So I think you can expect to see a lot of good action in the arena this year. The clown, the barrel man who is coming is Cody Sosby. He was the Wranglers National Finals Clown in Las Vegas this past year. He is a very large, funny individual. I think you will thoroughly enjoy him. We have two brand new bullfighters who have never been here before. One of them is a young man who was raised on a ranch in Corona, New Mexico. He likes to play with them. He kind of puts on his own little show. He's very entertaining. We have a brand new rodeo announcer this year who is out of Eastern Oklahoma. He has good volume, good tone, and a good rodeo voice. And when he speaks, people listen. I think you'll enjoy him. We also this year, for the first time in quite a while, we have a specialty act. We have a young man named Daniel Acosta, who out of Las Cruces, who is a charo. And he does some amazing things with a rope on the back of a horse that I think you'll find very entertaining. We have asked the Mariachis from Western New Mexico University to perform, and they have agreed to come. We have gone into our vendor aisle and brought in some new vendors, which I think you'll find the products they're offering very good. The biggest thing we've done this year, we've obtained a video scoreboard, which will actually show instant replay of the action in the arena. And we have quite a few businesses who want to advertise on that. I think you'll find that entertaining. All in all, what we've tried to do, we've tried to combine some local New Mexico talent with some very highly professional talent and blend it into a program and a rodeo that I think the citizens here in Grant County will be very interested in seeing. And we're trying to promote it as best we can. We're going to expand our promotion this year and go into Lourdesburg, Deming, Las Cruces, Cliff, Glenwood, and advertise and let them know that we do have a first quality program available this year. So if you'll tell all your friends and neighbors and bring your friends and neighbors and come to the rodeo, I think you'll be very entertained this year. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the chairman?
Yes. I'd like to move that the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week, June 13 through the 16th, be approved.
Yes, sir. Paul, David?
Not yet.
Bojan, Carrot.
We're down.
Could you take a picture with us as we present this, gee?
Sure.
Thank you. Do you want to take some?
There we go.
Hang on.
That'd be last one, it's hurtful.
Update. We have Matt Schultz and Eric Flood from the US Forest Service. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, Commissioners, other elected officials and staff. I'm the forest planner for the Gila National Forest. And as many of you know, the forest is revising or in the process of revising its land management plan or forest plan. And this comprehensive document provides management guidance for all the resources on the Gila National Forest for the next 15 years or more. And as one small part of that overall process, we are required to identify and evaluate any lands that may be suitable for inclusion into the National Wilderness Preservation System. And the forest supervisor must determine whether to recommend any lands to Congress for wilderness designation. Now, it's important to note that only Congress has the authority to establish or designate wilderness. And really, we've tried to make this process as transparent as possible with lots of opportunities for stakeholder involvement and comments. And we really do appreciate Grant County's comments earlier in the year on the draft inventory maps. And so what we thought we would do today is provide a broad overview of the process and then also provide an update on where we are in that process. So this process is composed of four steps. So we have inventory, evaluation, analysis, and recommendation. And the first step is the inventory step where you identify lands that may have potential wilderness characteristics. And this step is meant to be intentionally broad and inclusive. So it really becomes more of a GIS mapping exercise where the first thing we do is exclude any roads that may be open to the public, four-wheel drive or higher, that are without substantially noticeable improvements. And substantially noticeable improvements are obvious features on the landscape that may preclude wilderness characteristics. And then we look at what's left and generally kind of focus on the areas that are greater than 5,000 acres or are smaller than that threshold but might be adjacent to an existing wilderness or designated area. And so this is what it looks like on an example diagram. So first thing we do is exclude the roads and the substantially noticeable improvements. That's represented here by the oil derrick and the windmill. And then you start to see, you know, certain areas kind of coalesce. And we've been calling those inventoried areas, but they're generally those, you know, blue blobs that you see there. And what that signifies is these areas move on to the next step of the process, which would be the evaluation, where we determine the level of wilderness characteristics possessed by those areas. And so what we mean by wilderness characteristics is we're looking at manageability. So this could be size, shape, configuration, location. But then we're also looking at apparent naturalness. And the important thing about apparent naturalness is that's to the average person. So an average person probably wouldn't think that a tree plantation that's evenly spaced, you know, same height, would be apparently natural. And then the other things that we're looking at are solitude and opportunities for primitive and unconfined recreation. It doesn't have to have both those things, it just has to have one or the other. And what we mean by primitive and unconfined recreation is usually your hiking or kayaking, those types of activities. And so what this looks like on our example diagram is you start to see kind of a range of areas that have wilderness characteristics. So as we go through the evaluation, we might discover that, you know, there's areas that are unmanageable or have low characteristics for wilderness, and those may not be carried to the next step in the process. But there might be other areas that score higher that we might take into the analysis step. And this also shows kind of an area in the, you know, bottom left where, you know, it butts or is adjacent to an existing designated area. And even though that area is a little smaller than the others, we're still going to look at those characteristics and maybe carry that on to the analysis. So in the analysis step, we'll be looking at the evaluated areas and alternatives as part of the environmental impact statement, which is part of the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act. So here's where we get into a range of alternatives that could range from no recommended areas to a number of areas being recommended. And the other thing that opens up here is the range of criteria under consideration. The previous two steps, fairly limited criteria, just looking at those wilderness characteristics. And this is where it really opens up to look at all the relevant factors that we should be considering if an area were to be recommended, not just the wilderness characteristics. So this would include dispensable space from fire, wildland to urban interface, impacts to local existing or future forest product uses such as grazing, fuel wood, timber, mining, et cetera, effects on restoration needs, impacts to current or future recreation uses like mountain biking, and also comparison to characteristics of existing designated areas. So these were the focus of the letter we received from Grant County, and we just wanted to really let you know that we'll be carefully considering all these factors when we get to this step. So this is what it looks like when we look at our example diagram again. So you can see we now have three alternatives, A, B, and C. Alternative A does not have any recommended wilderness areas. Alternative B would have two recommended wilderness areas. And alternative C has multiple recommended areas. And then through the environmental impact statement, as we draft that and release that for public review and comment, we look at the impacts or effects of those recommendations scenarios. And then finally, we get to step four, which is recommendation of any lands by the forest supervisor to Congress for wilderness designation. And this is only final with the record of decision signature. And I should also note that the forest supervisor has quite a great deal of discretion when making this decision. And once again, only Congress can designate wilderness. So we might make a recommendation, and then it's up to Congress to designate that area or not. Sometimes these recommendations can sit in Washington with an election being taken for that planning cycle. And so what do we, what does this mean for our example diagram? So big old question mark. We don't really know at this point if the forest supervisor will recommend any or how many areas for designation until we go through the process. So just to reiterate, the first two steps are looking at mainly if an area could be wilderness based on a limited set of criteria. And then the final two steps inform the forest supervisor if an area should be recommended for wilderness designation based on all factors. So as you can see from this diagram, really, it's a whittling down process. We start out very broad, and then as more steps and criteria are applied, the areas under consideration become less and less. And so as far as where we fit into this process right now, we are finalizing the inventory maps, which is step one, and the evaluation process paper that was open for public comment earlier in the year after considering all those stakeholder comments. We are preparing to release the draft evaluation report, which is step two, for stakeholder review and comments. And we certainly welcome any stakeholder comments on the preliminary wilderness characteristic rankings and rationales given for each specific area. And with that, I'll turn it over to Adam.
Thank you, Matt. So I'm Adam McDonald, I'm the forest supervisor here on the Gila. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I actually wanted to take the opportunity, just this morning as we were speaking with you all, to give you some heads up. So Matt walked you through the process, and this is really important. So we've been through two steps of a four-step process. We have comments from the county, which really link to step number three. And so for a lot of the public, they don't always understand the processes. So from a communication standpoint, it would really help us out if the commission, whenever you're talking to folks, if forest planning comes up, to let folks know this is a really important step for them to engage on. Because their inputs, their local knowledge, their local desires, will really come through during this alternative evaluation piece, analysis piece. Other part that I want to give you a heads up on is just kind of what the numbers look like right now, because I don't want to surprise people. So when you run through that two-step process, it's a whittling down. Right now, if you look at just landscapes that have outstanding characteristics when you evaluate them through this process, there's 150,000 acres that fall in that category. That's spread across the 3.3 million acres of Gila National Forest. If you link in the high, it's about 160,000 acres. So there's some big acreages we're talking about right now. And I have done a lot of work with the counties locally. We've touched a number of different counties. And so I know where counties sit as far as their current feelings around wilderness. So I just want counties to know what's coming, so they're not surprised and know how they can engage in this process to give us relevant information we can use. And so what will really happen with this is we'll work to generate alternatives that try to balance the different desires of the folks in the counties. So those folks who we interact with, as well as folks outside the county, since we're national forests. I hope to have a good range of alternatives that allow us to then evaluate what the impacts would be of potential recommendations of wilderness. I, as the deciding official when it comes to this, want to truly understand what those impacts are to our local communities. We're really tied together when we look at decisions we make on the forest and how they impact the local communities and the uses of the forest. So really want folks to understand this process, want them to understand where the numbers are coming from, don't want them to be surprised, and then really want folks to engage at this point. Because this point in our process is where general public comments, opinions will really matter. So I just want to take that to emphasize that for you all as we take this next step together.
Can you tell us, so when the next step, it's already begun, the engagement process?
Yes, sir. So Matt can answer this probably better than I can, but just from a general standpoint, we're about to release the step two of this process, which was the evaluation step. So there's going to be maps, you're going to be able to see that. We roll right into them looking at alternatives. And so we'll have public meetings where we actually try to roll out and engage the public with this alternative development piece. But for us, it doesn't stop. Do we have an idea when that'll be?
Not quite yet.
Okay, okay. So as we continue to move forward, you'll see more press releases come out. But right now, as we release this step number two of the evaluation piece, if folks start seeing it, start having comments, great time to start engaging with us. Call us in this letters. It takes us a little while to run through all this, we have to balance all of the comments we get. So it's not a fast process, but, you know, it does help us, the earlier the better.
Thanks.
And with that, we can take any other questions as well?
Questions, comments for the question?
I have one.
Yes.
So I would be interested to know whether or not a dirt tank would be considered a substantial noticeable improvement. Yeah, I'll take that one.
Hi, I'm Eric Flood, and I'm the outdoor recreation planner here on the forest. In some cases, it may depend on the dirt tank, but in general, dirt tanks would not be considered substantially noticeable.
So would it be true that once that dirt tank is breached, if this became wilderness, it could never be fixed, correct?
No, that's not correct. Range improvements are allowable to continue to be maintained under the Wilderness Act.
With motorized equipment?
If motorized equipment was authorized in that particular area prior to designation and with line officer approval, yes.
So it becomes very difficult. And once that dirt tank is breached and you don't get line officer approval, then what happens is the wildlife all moves into the repairing area. happens is the wildlife all moves into the repairing area.
Well, that's speculative beyond anything that I could address.
What's happened in the dirt?
But, but what I can tell you is that under the Wilderness Act, continued maintenance of those areas is allowable. So I'm a line officer, and it's theoretical.
Yeah, I know, it's allowable, but it's never allowed. Thank you.
Just to add to that, yeah, definitely recognition that when you have wilderness designation, it does increase the difficulties when you look at management. So the Wilderness Act, as Eric said, does allow for range. It's actually in the act itself. But there are, every single case is very, very unique and specific to what it means to us, and it's not just dirt tanks. If you look at them, I've worked in the Forest Service for a number of years, you look at things like water rights, reservoirs, all those kind of things, which can fall into wilderness, the management of those, that infrastructure is more difficult. There's no two ways about it.
Mr. Trump?
Yes, and how about at the end of the process, with these different portions that had the characteristics of wilderness, and even if they're not chosen to be, are they still treated as wilderness?
So, no. So one of the things I want to point out is just that the forest supervisor has a lot of discretion when it comes to this, so they get to make some decisions on what we do or don't recommend. Any areas that are not recommended will be not recommended for specific reasons. And really, for me, it's because the potential recommendation would impact our ability to manage those lands toward the desired conditions that we want. And that can include things like recreation uses on those lands, historic uses, fuel wood gathering, those kind of things, or even restoration type work. Our landscapes currently, for a lot of them, are in need of pretty heavy restoration. And so wilderness designation might impact our ability to do that. So for whatever reason I make the decision to say that's not gonna be included, those lands then go into a different, a different type of management category, because they weren't included for a specific reason, we want to be able to carry out our management objectives on those lands. For any lands that do get recommended, we do manage those as wilderness until there's a decision made. And the main reason for that is because there are characteristics that make that landscape important, make it unique, it's the whole reason we put it up for potential designation. We don't want to manage those lands to change those characteristics. And so for any lands that are recommended, we will manage them as their wilderness until the decision is made, but as Matt said, can take a very, very long time.
Thanks for explanation.
I got one thing too.
I wanted to follow up on that real quick. Throughout this process, the process itself doesn't give any kind of special management or designation to these areas. We're only examining them, they're not protected until or if they're recommended by Adam to Congress.
Go ahead.
Okay. If I could follow up, are there currently lands that were recommended under a previous study by a previous supervisor that are in that category?
No, there are not, but there are wilderness study areas that were designated by Congress for the forest to consider and report back to Congress whether the forest recommended them to be wilderness areas. And the forest did report back on those to Congress, however, Congress has not acted on those.
But it did take some action by Congress to designate them as wilderness study areas.
So, yes, they did do that, however, they haven't followed up on the forest's previous recommendation on that. So those areas are actually included as part of this recommendation process, and so we will make a fresh recommendation, for lack of a better word.
Further comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone who's just joined our meeting recently, we have changed the agenda, and so we will be moving on to agenda item, room and number 15, executive session in accordance with New Mexico statutes, 1978-10, 15-1, 8, to discuss the disposal of real property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to go into executive session.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? I have a discussion. I will, as far as item U, is there any, will there any be, sorry, will there be any action necessary from this meeting, or is that undecided?
It's undecided, we don't know.
Since we're coming back into open session anyway.
Okay, very good.
It's really not a matter of property.
Okay, so the question for the commissioners then, a motion and a second, is are you in favor of going into closed session? It's okay, I'll do the roll call vote. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, and I think it'd be worth noting that we estimate 30 minutes or so. Is that what we decided?
That's correct, yeah, so we should be able to be back in here about 30 minutes from now.
Yes, that's right.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, sir.
Yes. We're in executive session. For callbacks orders, this regular meeting, May 17th.
Mr. Chairman?
As a result of executive.
Oh, do you want, it's good to say that.
As a result of executive session, we only discussed the sale of real property and no action was taken. We're ready for agenda item, room and number six. A minute?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes for April 17, 2018 work session meeting minutes, the April 19, 2018 regular meeting minutes, the April 30 of 2018 special meeting minutes, and the May 10, 2018 budget here in minutes.
Okay, and also the minutes from, as.
We're not approving those, we just, we just read it. I'll look at the bottom.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do, but you want me to act on, okay. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Approval minutes?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, thank you. Pursuant to the state statute, the minutes of today's open meeting will include, will reflect that we have some special meetings that matters were discussed, but they were only limited to the, those specified in the notice of those closed meetings, and that is specifically the April 2015, so April 25 medical staff meeting and the April 25 closed meeting that we had at 2:00 in the red room. And those were specifically for the discussion of disposal of real property. Moving on to agenda item F, approve or disapprove the May 8 expenditure report.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the May 2018 expenditure report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're, we've already covered G and H, moving on to agenda item I, for approve or disapprove delinquent solid waste accounts that are subject to lien.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the delinquent solid waste accounts subject to lien.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item J, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the removal of broken and obsolete fixed assets.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item K, is there a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Grand County Sheriff's Department intergovernmental transfer to the Silver City Police Department for a Zebra labeled printer with power adapter and ROV handheld scanner.
Second.
I'll second that, sorry.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the Grand County Commissioners' acceptance of dedication of Ridgeway for a portion of Main Street located in the Penis Altus mining district.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Agenda item M.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2018 County Fire Protection Fund distribution application for the following volunteer fire departments, Cliff Hila Fire Administration, Fort Baird Lower Members, Penis Altus, San Rita Head over Fiero, Sapiel Creek, Tyrone Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda I demand discussion and possible action regarding Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees selection process. I've passed out relative to our discussion on Tuesday, edited, you can see the, my edits in the text box. Commissioner Caston pointed out that it's a three here, term of service, not two. Those are things that I thought from the discussion we would include in the application. Is there any discussion with that?
It's a process. What's that? It's a process that works for me. Why don't you get the letter of application and resume? Really.
Why does it say term of service is a minimum of two years?
Or is it a mistake?
Three, yeah. Right?
So what we, so is, are we actually having action on this document today?
We don't have to. I thought, I thought maybe.
I believe you need to, because their term ends in June, and you don't have another meeting until June the 14th to take action. So I was under the assumption that you would take action.
Are we taking action on this document, not the process, or the process?
Well, there's three things I think we need to consider, and one is the application, one is the process, and one, because of a communication I just got from Mr. Morales in here at Willmont, is the actual makeup of the board. What I was wondering is if we could have action on this on the 23rd meeting?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my office needs to be very clear as to what your expectations are, and we have to have time to adequately advertise for this if you have to have an appointment by June the 30th, so that they take office effective July 1.
Can we consider action on this today? Is it okay?
It's up to you, but I'm just telling you, time is not on your side.
Let's, if, let's get a motion and then a lot of discussion.
I move to approve the Board of Trustees candidate application with the change of two to three on the terms of service.
Second. Okay, discussion.
So what we, are we only looking at this application, because we don't have anything in front of us that talks about the process?
Right, not only that, but on the actual.
Only the application at this time?
On the actual agenda, it says discussion and possible, and possible.
And it also includes the process, so we can discuss.
And the process as well.
Right, if, what I was thinking is, once we, once we approve this, then we'll go into the process.
I'm just saying that we don't have anything in writing in front of us that's not the process. I want to make sure the process piece gets up.
It'll be separate, absolutely, yeah. We're just considering the application, then we'll consider the process, and then possibly the makeup of the board.
So the only thing then that is not on here, we did have a little bit of discussion about limiting the letter of interest to a certain number of words. One page.
A letter of interest should be.
So I want to say that then. I want to say that it's limited to one page.
So we could, we could amend the motion or just be informal, and we can just ask management.
We can amend it, too.
All you have to do is say in the letter, it's no longer than one page.
Do you want to make that in the motion and amend it?
I'll make a motion that we amend the, in a letter of interest text, to add a maximum of one page.
Second. Okay, are there any other changes or considerations?
We gotta vote on that.
Yeah, hold on for a second.
You gotta vote on that in a minute.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You have your main motion.
Thank you. So to the main motion, are there any other changes that you'd like to, or discussions?
We have a date that we're putting in the mail.
What is the date that you would like to have these applications track?
That's gonna change. That's anything.
It's Friday, June?
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
It will change, but.
I need to leave that, I think you need to leave the date open, because you're gonna continue to use this application form, correct?
Right.
So it's gonna be like.
And it'll change from, from time to time.
I think on this application, yes, but we also.
If you all would like to choose a date, but I don't think I need to put it on.
To a meeting.
You don't need to determine what your deadline is, and then.
I like the theory of the first Friday, however, it's awfully quick this time. So what if you said, what if you said this, the first Friday after the first Monday?
You want this to go over to trip back in writing, but I need to know so that you are the ones that are, this goes along the lines of your process, or you want, what are you guys gonna do, so I know when these have to be due, so I can get them to you to review, you can decide if you're in.
This is why we said it every time.
So I think.
You can pick it every time, so.
So I think what I hear in the manager says, we don't want a date on this.
That's what I think, too.
Is that, do we?
That's actually your preference?
Yes, then we can start, it's going to depend on this process that you guys keep talking about, is going to drive what that deadline is going to be.
Okay, in that case, I'll call for a question.
So, well, I guess we need, we can just take that off of there without action, can't we? Do you agree or do you?
It's fine, just wait. We don't have.
Decide what you want to do.
Okay, so you will have it on the application, very good. So the original question, then all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So there's the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move it this time that we require these applications to be on by June 8.
Second.
That is the second Friday.
Yes. By noon, so we can come pick them up on Friday.
So by noon on Friday.
Sorry, I'm still getting my calendar.
When's the June meeting?
12. Well, the 14th is actually the meeting.
The 12th is the work session.
So that doesn't. We haven't presented work session.
That doesn't leave any room for the process that we discussed on Tuesday.
Do you all think the first, is it impossible? Just too tight? It's awfully tight.
No, it's two weeks.
I'm glad we started talking about this, aren't you?
The fourth.
It's two weeks. I agree with the first.
Well, I'm just saying, you could go the following Monday, that way.
The fourth.
Give them an extra week.
They're alone.
May you share? Yes, what do you want? If it's quick, though, because Mr. Caston's gotta get under it.
If they're interested, they already know they're quite sure. June 1st is plenty of time.
I, I actually agree with that. I think it's two weeks.
Mr. Alms, what do you think?
I think that'd be fine, either way. I amend my motion to June 1st.
Okay, second? All in favor?
That was you seconding, or you calling for a second?
I was asking for a second.
I seconded that, thank you.
Aye.
June 1st.
June 1st for this.
Okay, any questions with that, then?
So then we'll, we will go through them ourselves, and we'll rank them, and Harry will pick up those rankings from Charlene, and he'll have us a matrix, is that what I understood?
Well, let's talk about the process here.
Challenge, we didn't all rank all the candidates, and so then I had to make some assumptions.
Okay, so tell us again what that process is.
Well, I do have a recommendation, ranking that you share with each other that happened at this, at an open meeting, okay? Just wanted to get that out there, because that was an issue that came up last time.
Can't we just give them to the manager and then discuss it at the meeting?
That's fine with me, but I just don't want you to be giving them to each other, or Charlene to disseminate them. I don't want you to create a rolling form on it.
We don't want to see each other's rankings before the open meeting.
I don't mind if you do it in advance, that makes perfect sense, but just don't share your.
And how you do it with them? You can share them with others.
You can give them to Charlene.
Share them in the open session.
No.
We can't, you and I can't share them, and then you share what I said we gave.
You can submit them to Charlene, and then she will provide them at the open meeting to you all.
So we shouldn't talk about our rankings, but most of them.
She's not gonna do anything with them, she's just gonna take them?
We're skipping a step, though.
Well, because that step is a rolling form. When you.
What step are we talking about?
Talk about the step, because the step is, what we agreed on in the work session on Tuesday, was that we were gonna rank them and have an, an activity done by the top five.
That's right.
That needs to be done before the open meeting.
That's right, but part of that needs to be a commission.
That needs to be, at an opening, the narrowing itself, that vote needs to be in the open meeting.
We're gonna tell them on Tuesday.
I discussed it.
We ranked them, Charlene has them, the only person here that knows what all the rankings are is Harry.
Right.
She invites the top five. That sounds like we could do that.
It also was not, I did not know that you are aware that you would need to do that in open meeting. When you take action as a board, it needs to take place in an open meeting, I don't think this is.
There is an action that needs to take. There is an action that needs to take place.
If you tried to delegate it to someone else, they would have to have an open meeting.
Because we talked about on Tuesday about having the top five.
We will need a special meeting to follow what we talked about.
That's exactly right.
So let's add up on the process a little bit.
There's still plenty of time, though.
Let's back up just a minute on the process. So the applications are due June 1st. They'll come in Charlene's office, and then we can come look at them June 2nd.
I thought we were saying noon on the 1st so that we could come pick them up in the afternoon of Friday the 1st.
Okay.
I feel like... I would like until the 7th.
You want a special meeting on the 7th?
A special meeting, and then we pick five, and then that gives them a five days. So that gives us six days, gives them five days.
You guys are really ambitious, thinking we're going to get 13 again.
No, I don't know. Who knows, right? I've already said I don't think we will get 13 again, but we want to be prepared in case it happens.
Okay, so we'll pick them up on noon on June 1st. We'll review them. How are we going to rank them? Is there a problem with picking them up on June?
No, but if they're due at noon on June 1st, don't show up at noon and expect to have them in case some people actually will drop them off at 11:55 if they're due at noon. So give us a little bit of time to make the pockets for you.
Okay, I'll give you some.
We won't shoot till 1:00.
The next day.
This is...
Tomorrow's coming up.
We could live at 1:00. That would be okay.
Okay, and then we're talking about looking these over and ranking them. How are we going to rank them?
One through however many there are.
Okay. Just like we did last year, then, okay?
All of them.
Okay. And then Mr. Brown was scoring the ranking, is that right?
I don't care. That's just a...
But we're going to have a special meeting on the 7th.
That's right. That's the reason to do that.
To do that narrowing based on the...
The narrowing has to be done in an open meeting.
Yes, because that is taking action by the board, yes.
Well, there's no act... when one or two commissioners gets together and narrows, that's not an action. They would bring that to the meeting, and we would... that's what...
And then our action would be choosing those top five.
It would be...
Your action is choosing the top five, is what I'm saying.
Right, and that would be in an open meeting.
Chair suggests that we could have the list prepared for that meeting.
Right. And another thing I'd like to consider is that...
I feel like the... well, two commissioners can do it.
Right?
Well, no, because we're taking the information from all the commissioners. It's a rolling quorum. I would submit them.
Ranking isn't an action.
Well, how about if somebody at county staff...
Yeah, if we give them to Charlene, she can rank them for us, and then we come in at the meeting and pick our top five. That's obvious.
I think that sounds good.
And Charlene...
Does that mean that the last trustee we picked, who chose incorrectly, may have...
It's the first time that it has ever called itself on something so it can take back a decision. Good thinking.
So Abby, would that process be okay, that we submit those to the county manager? She would rank those and be prepared for us to vote on them Tuesday?
I still find that to be a tally. That's not at an open meeting. What she can do is collect the documents. I don't see what the difference is between calculating it in her office and coming out here and calculating it. So I would rather she collect your information, come back out here, and tell you what the rankings were.
I heard what you just said, so...
So could we do that at a special meeting?
Yes, yes, that is acceptable and I think we're doing it.
So I just heard what you just said, and here's why I don't think it is a decision. And that is because I would like for part of the process to be that when we see those tabulations, if there is a majority of the commissioners, which would be three, that want to select one of those who isn't in the ranking, that we would have the ability to do that.
Well, sure you would.
And so the decision will be made on Tuesday. The preparation will be done before then. The decision will be made on Tuesday. Is that hard to...
I'm trying to agree with the...
So, okay.
That's the right thing.
What I'm telling you is, just because you're not... when I say, when we take action, it needs to be out at this meeting, correct? There is another situation where you can't just discuss county business at a closed meeting. The discussion and action are both subject to open meetings. So that's what we're getting into. Does that make sense?
So you're saying we're discussing because we've weighed in? I get that now.
I'm happy to discuss it. I think maybe this is... we're getting into the weeds here. What my recommendation is, is that you do not discuss in the form of a rolling quorum county business. So I think the cautious route would be exactly what you just described. Give the information to Charlene, we'll come out here. It's an easy tabulation. We've done it out here before. We'll do it right out here. There won't be any question about whether... then you just fully discuss it.
Okay.
So I can't tabulate them? Can we just talk about where...
Don't talk to the mic when you say that.
All right, so then, we're going to have a special meeting on the morning of the 7th. So then at the 5th...
Travel, please.
See ya. Travel careful.
I think it was the 7th.
Okay. I said the 7th, but I heard somebody else suggest the 2nd.
I can do either day.
June 7th is in the calendar.
Is the cap entity?
June 7th is...
I like the 7th. I like the 7th before often.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Alves? June 7th time?
Right, so the 7th is out.
Okay, June 7th time? I have a meeting at 9 o'clock, but I guess we can change that, can't we, Jerry?
Meeting's there.
I'm going to... I'm going to have to delegate this probably to Bertha. She might throw something to me. I am in MSU orientation, so I'll have someone in my staff to take care of that on the 7th.
That's okay. Okay, June 7th, 9 o'clock? So you've just officially canceled your meeting with me on June 7th? That's fine, thank you.
I did.
Okay.
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock. And then we'll rank those, discuss them, and then...
Finalists are 5.
Okay, thank you.
So then, when... so then...
On the 12th?
So noon... so well, the work session is on the 12th, right? And so we would want at least a little time to look at them. So do we want whatever they're going to do due by 11... by noon on the 11th?
Whatever he's going to do later.
I don't even remember. I'm now so confused.
Well, we're going to have the five finalists hopefully selected on the special meeting on the 7th.
We were going to have them, at that point, going to present probably into more questions than just a letter of interest.
Right.
But we were going to provide them a set so they would answer the same question.
So they would just need to be informed to come to the work session.
And they should be provided those questions.
Yes.
Now, yeah, now we're melding schedule with process. That's good.
So we have to have the questions ready...
By the 7th, really?
When we announce the five finalists.
So we can discuss those questions at the special meeting on the 7th also. Just make sure we're all comfortable with those questions.
I'm comfortable with that.
So in order to select finalists, ask sort questions on the June 7th meeting.
Right, yes.
So I make sure the agenda covers everything that you want to do that day.
And then they will appear at the work session on the 12th and answer those questions.
That's my suggestion.
For the discussion, like they did last time, they'll do that.
Yes.
And then we'll make the selection on the 14th?
Yes.
Is there anything else?
In the interest of not having the meeting on the 7th, so I can do the special meeting on the morning of the 7th, but I can't be here until noon that day. And so in the interest of getting through that meeting... Expeditiously, there we go. Would it be... can we bring questions with us and discuss them? Written questions? Can we commit to bringing questions with us at the 7th?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
So when we... what time are we going to have that meeting?
I haven't done none of them.
We're going to still have it at 9:00, or do you want to...
Yeah, 9:00. No, 9:00.
You can't be here then.
You know what she meant?
I meant, I can't spend... I have my boss from Santa Fe is here that day.
So you can be here, but you've got to get...
I can't be here for a long time.
Does your head... can I hear this? Since she has a conflict with the 6th?
No, she doesn't have a conflict. What she said was... and she mentioned she could be here at the 6th this morning.
Okay, yeah.
She just can't stay here very long.
So we'll have a quick meeting on the...
It sounded at first like you couldn't... you had a meeting until noon.
No, we have it.
But you meant you could have been here until noon.
I can be here all morning.
Have we discussed everything we need to discuss about the process, then are we ready for a motion?
Do we feel that the public announcements part of the process is that? Is that working? Do we need to do anything different about that? I don't have anything in mind. I just want to think through each of the pieces, because presumably all of us and others are alerting people we want to alert anyway.
Well, we got 13 applicants last time. That was... so that was a good sign that if we did whatever we do, we'd get a pretty good number, hopefully.
So actually, what we did differently last time than from the previous process, it used to be simply a legal notice, we actually took out a small little display ad where it drew somewhat of attention, some attention to, they're not buried in the legal space.
Let's do what we did.
Same process, okay?
Okay, is there a motion? Or is there...
We just direct the manager, but it's not an action.
Okay. Is that okay? I'm comfortable with that.
She has authority to spend the money.
Oh, no, I'm sorry for the whole process.
But I think that we're...
Do we need a motion for the whole process, or we're good on that?
No, I don't think that's necessary. This just helps me understand so that whenever people ask our office questions, we can answer those properly. So, thank you.
So is there any further discussion on Agenda Item N then? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item O. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I move that we approve Agreement Number A-18-06, Joint Powers Agreement between Grand County Town, Silver City City, Barrett, Village of South Clare, Town Hurley, Western New Mexico University, and Gila Regional Medical Center for Consolidated Public Safety Answers.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Motion carries. Agenda Item P.
Chair, I move we approve Agreement A-18-07, Agreement with the State of New Mexico Children, Youth, and Families Department for the J-JAC Continuum and Compliance Monitoring.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Agenda Item Q, approve or disapprove the...
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number R-1811, Preliminary Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I have it.
Go ahead.
I misinterpreted one of these earlier ones, 1806. What happened to the JPA for the regional dispatch? That's for some reason what I thought 1806 was going to be.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Oh, good. It is, even though it's at this point... obviously, I didn't read something last night properly. The public safety answering point is the same thing? I don't know why I didn't catch that earlier. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we've already done all our business on that, but on Tuesday, we discussed exactly the regional hasn't committed yet, have they? Did they substitute them?
Not by now, they're not substituting. But you know, the board took action, so you charge them per call. So they'll have to pay in one form or another.
Okay, Agenda Item R, we need to recess first as the Board of Commissioners convenes the Grand County Health Council. Is there a motion to that thing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed and convened as the Grand County Health Care Claims Council. Motion, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the March 2018 Health Plan Claims in the amount of $108,125,034.
Is there a second?
Second. Let me clarify, $108,125,34.
34 cents, yes, thank you.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor. Motion carries. Approve the April 2018 Health Plan Claims in the amount of $14,438,34. Is there a motion?
Chair, I move we approve the April 2018 Health Plan Claims in the amount of $14,438,34.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn as the Health Claims Board reconvene as the Grand County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Call the word of the convenience of the Grand County Board of Commissioners. Will stand for Elected Official Reports. And sorry for the inconvenience today. Mr. Trietta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, and I apologize on my attire. I've been out in the field working sales for the position that's thrown in, so we have to do our report by July 1st, so I apologize for the attire. And for starters, I would just like to thank my chief deputy. He actually got his fourth class, and now he's a New Mexico Certified Appraiser under the International Association of Assistant Officers. And I also would like to congratulate Gabriel Grado and also Minisha Lucero. They actually passed their first course under the IWO, and that's the fundamental of real estate appraising. So I got to give them a great big hand for doing that. It's a very tedious course. It's a whole week of a semester, and they take a four-hour exam afterwards. I would also like to thank Lisa Edwards, our commissioner, for allowing us to have another comment during the July's meeting about the budget. So I thank you very much for allowing us to do that. I would like to make a statement that I've been spending a little bit of time at the Gila Regional Medical Center, and more than I thought I'd spent some time there. And I just want to thank them. They have been very diligent. They've done a great job, and we have had exceptional care. And I just wanted to throw that out there because it's really close to me that I'm going to be spending some time there. So thank you, and I do appreciate having Gila Regional Medical Center here in Grand County. One thing, I'm glad that my chief appraiser, Mr. Tohio, and I see Bernadette, I just wanted to say a big congratulations for the Silver High Girls softball team on their eighth championship. And like I said, I really want to see Cameron really stepped up to the plate, but more on the mound than anything else. So I want to do a big congratulation for you guys. I really don't have very much to say. We're just working as diligent as possible, keeping our office afloat, and I thank you, and I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Trietta?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first I would like to present Veronica Rodriguez, who's my new chief deputy. And she's been on board for about a month, and she's a very quick study. She's doing bunches of stuff already, and it's... her learning curve is like straight up. She's picked it up really well. And I also want to congratulate my staff, Liz Hernandez and Vanji Gonzalez, for helping her through a lot of the tough stuff that she's learned. And they're very impressed as well, saying she catches on pretty good. You know, she's pretty good. That's... we don't have to keep repeating. And so, anyway, we're real happy with that. And I don't know if you have any questions of her at this time?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So our next... last meeting, I was kind of in a rush with other things that I had going on, and I had left you the April 17th report. If you have any questions over that, it was a pretty quiet time. We, you know, collected a grand total of $296,793.52 for the county portion of the taxes. of the taxes during that period. And as compared to the May 17th report that you have, um, where during the same one-month period, uh, we collected $1,263,764.66. I might add that, um, of that 1.2 million, 400,000 was done in one day, which was the deadline, of course, May the 10th. So, it's been, uh, it's been, like I said, my, my, my staff has really stepped up, and we have kept up with the mail. The mail, you know, is, wasn't as bad this second half as the first half, but, uh, we've been able to maintain that and kept going, so, uh, altogether, year-to-date, uh, we've collected 21,483,173.44 for all entities that's been receiveded through the Treasurer's Office. Um, we've had the State Property Tax Division in our office for almost a month, they left yesterday around noon, and tentatively, there is a tax sale that is scheduled, this room has been reserved for the 28th of June, and, uh, that's when they expect to do, uh, the tax sale. There's 86 properties on the, on their list at this point. Um, they have been working, putting out the red tags, and we have collected quite a few of those accounts, uh, and, and some very delinquent accounts that have amounted to quite a bit of money, actually. So they, that's, they've been very active, and they're, they're very satisfied that they've had a good, you know, period while they've been here, and they've collected quite a bit. So, uh, we don't have a specific amount of what that is, but, uh, because basically, we collect it, we give them the receipts, and they, I, I know that, that the list started at over 100 accounts, and it's down to 86, so what, exactly why they were taken off is not that all of those were paid, but they're whittled down the, the list to 86. Um, so for, for those people that are interested, it's, keep watching the newspaper, and they'll be publishing the list for the, for the auction. And like I said, is it right now, tentatively, the 28th of June? We haven't gotten the confirmation from Property Tax Division, but we've reserved this room, we've reserved, uh, security, so that's, that's where we stand at the time, so stand for any questions that you want to have.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, appreciate it. Clerk Castillo?
Commissioner, I'd just like to remind everybody that we do have absentee in-person voting going on in the clerk's office, we're open Monday through Fridays. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the clerk? Thank you. Um, I see, uh, Sheriff being one of his, uh, his patients ran out of his problem. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Agnes, would you like to go first?
Um, thanks, Mr. Chair, I don't have anything to say.
Uh, Mr. Brown?
No, nothing.
Mr. Agnes?
Yes, I do. Okay. And what I'm coming forward to you now is that, uh, what, what, what I'm coming, what I'm coming forward with now is something that I stand for and comment on my feelings, and this isn't necessarily the feelings of the Commission, unless they agree, that's really up to them. Um, it's so very important for us to get out to vote. It's really, really, really important for us now. We're at a point in Grant County history that I really think we need to continue to hold on to the values we've always had. Grand County has always been known for our pristine multi-use forests, cattle growing, hunting, fishing, but one of the most important is the copper industry. Freeport has over 1,500 work, workers working at the Freeport McMoran mines. Freeport McMoran pays $70,000 to $80,000 per year, average, with benefits per employee. This is over $11 million in salaries alone to our community. This does not include the construction companies working at, at Freeport properties, so that would be separate, that would be in addition. Ask yourself how many people you know that work at the mine, most people have family members working there. Freeport McMoran also brings in over 2.6 million into Grant County, at Grant County's general budget, and also contributes to the budgets of the town of Silver City, Baird, Hurley, Santa Clara, the Corby Schools, and Silver Schools. I'm sure it even impacts charter schools throughout the community in some sort. It would be a sad day in our community, the day Freeport closes their doors and we no longer have mining. As a business owner, I know we would lose a lot of customers if mining would end in Grant County. I would like to thank the miners that put food on my family's table. As far as I'm concerned, anyone against mining should not be considered for the County Commission. Our county depends on the $158 million impact Freeport creates throughout our community. Freeport also has a $369.9 million impact throughout our state. I also like to tell everyone to go onto the Secretary of State's website, and you can see what monies and what was, what is donated to campaigns. I ask, ask yourself, who does, who do these donors represent? A special interest is a giving, is giving monies to candidates, then candidates are obligated to represent that special interest group. As far as I'm concerned, I do not believe that anyone getting donations from special interest groups that have been fighting against our way of life in Grant County should be considered for our commission. I thank you, and I urge you very much to get out and vote, because life as we know in Grant County could be jeopardized. And I really feel that hunting, fishing, utilizing our force to the fullest extent, not just for quality few, is very, very important to all of us. I, I can't say how important it is to get out and vote. I also would like to congratulate the Silver High softball team for their championship. They, I got to umpire a few of their games, and they're just awesome, they're, they are a well-oiled machine, and, uh, there's nothing more I can say about them, but they are, they are the real deal, and that's a great program. Congratulations to them, and hopefully we can have a, a, uh, some kind of process for, for them, and not just here, but maybe some kind of a feast for them in the front, because eight championships in a row, that's unheard of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I'd also like to, um, you guys better time me, so I'll try very quick. I'd also like to congratulate the girls softball, uh, sorry, baseball team for eight years running, their coaches, Coach Tru, uh, their parents, and, uh, it's pretty exceptional what they did. I do have some concerns about what Mr. Juarez spoke about earlier, and I'd be glad to, uh, try to make an appointment with him to go visit the sheriff. I like the idea of a celebration with a feast out in front, rather than something, um, as Mr. Juarez described, uh, which could be potentially dangerous, um, and I, I know that's happened before with other, with other teams, so I, I do have some concerns there. Uh, I'd like to, in fact, I have a letter, just pass it out, but, uh, Freeport Matt Moran donated, um, $6,000 unsolicited to the county, and it's explained, and I guess you guys are probably already hear that, um, it's explained in this letter, um, it was, uh, and so I'm appreciative and wanted to recognize that donation. It came up in the discussion with, uh, the Silver Schools that we were lacking some wireless infrastructure at the Conference Center, and so they just stepped in and, uh, wrote out a $6,000 check to the county manager, uh, for that. I, I also have, uh, since Mr. Agnes was talking about Freeport, um, I have a list of, uh, investments, sorry, thank you, uh, in our community that Freeport, uh, has done recently, typically Freeport provides between $1 million and $1.3 million annually in donations to various nonprofits, schools, and local governments. And this is really too lengthy to, uh, read, but got one for the press if they want one to, but everything from, starts out with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, skip about 10, uh, Western New Mexico University, uh, just, just to name a few, uh, Gila Wildlife Rescue, the, the, the list is complete, it'd be good to look at this. Aldo Leopold School, Calvary Christian Academy, Silver High School, uh, these sponsor teams. Also, um, in addition to that, many Freeport employees participate in Freeport's annual United Way Drive. Many of those funds are collected through one-time giving or regular payroll deduction to go to the Grant County, to Grant County organizations through United Way. Uh, additionally, Freeport employees volunteer time for formal company-driven volunteer events. In 2017, employees volunteered over 770 hours in these company-sponsored events. And lastly, um, many employees participate in an employee matching gift fund. I know, uh, one instance, just an example of that is, uh, some Freeport employees worked at the ball field at Cliff and donated their time, and then Freeport compensated that time in an additional matching donation. So they, uh, they volunteered, uh, their time for something that they felt was valuable, and, and Freeport matched that donation. Um, moving on, uh, like to thank the mayor of Silver City and, and Charlene for some of the cleanup that's, uh, started and, and, uh, gonna be, and, and the maintenance department too, of course, uh, on US Highway 180 East, and Mayor Laddner has, uh, approached me and got me out a couple of times with the D.O.T., and, uh, come up with a plan to clean up all our highways, and I didn't realize how much trash there was till he took me out there and showed me. And wow, uh, it's a big job. Uh, the D.O.T.'s, uh, promised to help, and Mayor Laddner wants to have a Volunteer Day. I wanna support that and, uh, see what else we can do to, to have an effort to, to clean up the trash and, and, uh, clean up our highways, be a, be a little more proud of our community. Um, wanna recognize, sorry.
This is my, uh...
Yeah, I know, no kidding.
Three quarters left.
Yeah, I wanted to say something about the airport, um, and, uh, I, I've heard a lot of, uh, recently about cancellation and delays, I think they're better than they were earlier in the year. I think there's still a problem, but especially a problem with communication when there are delays. Uh, you know, people don't need to show up at the airport, uh, just to find out, that they could have, they've known for hours that the plane is gonna be delayed or canceled, they could have got a text message. And, uh, I'm excited to have Advanced Air come meet with us, uh, later this month. And I just noticed that, you know, I don't know if this is their hyper, if it's actually true, but we'll find out, I hope. They have a 98% on-time departure rate, they have not canceled a flight since 2013. And that's, uh, really exciting, because if we wanna get our inflaments up and, uh, be, have access to the federal monies associated with that for airport repairs, which are significant, uh, we want, uh, regular air service that we can depend on. And so I'm, I think competition is a good thing, I'm excited for that. Um, somewhere there's something, here we go. So there was, um, talking about FFA, which is near and dear to my heart, I have a son that was a state FFA officer, and I'm aware of all the training FFA can do, not only for those who wanna go into agriculture, but whatever field they choose. There was 13 state FFA scholarships given this year, and four of those, four of the 13, were in, uh, the Grant County Commissioner District Four, so I'm pretty proud of those folks. Uh, the first one, Courtney Harden from Cliff, if you don't know, that's Charlene's, uh, our manager's daughter. Uh, Riley Bradson and Bryce Humphrey, all from Cliff, so three of those from Cliff, and one from Silver City, Emily McDonald. Wanna say congratulations to those. And I think you're about turning, I think my time's up, so, and have them open the final poll. Uh, thank you, is there anything further? As a motion to adjourn?
So what?
All in favor? Second? Thank you, all in favor? Medium is adjourned.